Good evening. Thank you for joining us for our regular scheduled council meeting. It's Tuesday, September 24th at 7:00 PM. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Charlie Davidson, George Glover, Ben Saucetta.
Here.
Charles Schwanki.
Here.
Terry Osborn.
Here.
Troy Hill.
Here.
Brandy Bailey. Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk. The council members that are not present tonight have all notified me in advance that they wouldn't make it due to scheduling conflicts, so we'll move on. Our invocation will be with Pastor Howerton, and Councilman Saucetta will lead our pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate you allowing me to be here. Let's pray. Father, we come to you this evening. God, we thank you for your goodness. We thank you, Lord, for sending some rain. We thank you, Lord, for your watch care over us. Pray for those that aren't able to be here tonight, that, Lord, you'd keep them safe and well. God be with this meeting. Lord, I thank you for these servants. Lord, I pray you'd bless them, give them wisdom and grace. I thank you, Lord, for the first responders. I thank you, God, for them. Just keep them safe, and, Lord, just give them courage and boldness, and, Lord, bless them for the work that they do. And, Lord, just bring wisdom and grace to this meeting. We love you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. First, we have approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Terry.
I move to approve the agenda.
Troy.
Second.
Motion by Terry, seconded by Troy. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Under awards and presentations, we have a proclamation for Blood Cancer Awareness Month. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Once again, this is a proclamation because September is Blood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, an estimated more than 1.5 million people in the U.S. are either living with or are in remission from leukemia, lymphoma, or myeloma, and whereas, every 180 seconds, someone in the U.S. is diagnosed with blood cancer, and whereas, a cure for lymphoma can only be realized through advanced cancer research, and whereas, awareness and education are powerful tools in the race to find a cure for lymphoma, and whereas, the health and vitality of the people of Kansas and the city of Park City are significantly enhanced by local efforts to increase communication and education pertaining to blood cancers, and whereas, the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, LLS, exists to find cures and ensure access to treatments for blood cancer patients and offers a wide range of support services and programs for people with lymphoma, their loved ones, and caregivers, and whereas, Blood Cancer Awareness Month helps to raise general awareness of the disease and provides hope to all those affected by lymphoma diagnosis. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Park City does hereby proclaim the month of September as Blood Cancer Awareness Month to enhance the understanding of blood-related cancers and to encourage participation in voluntary activities to support education, programs, and the funding of research programs to find a cure for them.
Very good. Thank you, Dana. Ben?
Yes. So, on behalf of the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, I had a few things. One, I want to introduce Buffy the Goat. Buffy is the representative this year for our Visionaries of the Year campaign, which is a fundraising campaign to help do the work of the mission of LLS, which is to find a cure for all blood cancers. This is most just some of the stats that you mentioned. Every three minutes, 180 seconds, every three minutes, somebody in the United States is diagnosed with a blood cancer of some sort, and every nine minutes, somebody dies from blood cancer in the United States. And those numbers are staggering. Thanks to the work of the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, which is made possible by the support of citizens, over 100 and some $175 million this year alone is going into research for cancer treatments. And what is so phenomenal is the fact that they share their research with various cancers and other diseases. So, people who've been affected by breast cancer, ovarian cancer, rheumatoid arthritis, lupus, these are all just a, these are just a few of the, of the diseases and cancers that have benefited from the millions of dollars that are poured in from LLS annually into cancer research. Additionally, one of the great things, another one of the great things that they have is patient services. A lot of times, people just aren't aware that this exists, and LLS exists to be an advocate for the patient, or they can have caseworkers. And one of the great things there is with a confirmed, this is not the great thing, not a confirmed diagnosis, but when you reach out to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society with a confirmed diagnosis, the very first thing they do is send you a $100 gift card just to start your, just to get to and fro, from cancer treatments or doctor's appointments and everything, and they walk alongside of patients the entire time. And so, knowing how many Americans are affected by blood cancer, it's important that we check, just, again, that continual advocacy, because even just last weekend, I was introduced to another family who was, whose daughter at 27 was diagnosed with AML, which is the most aggressive form of leukemia, and just being able to be an advocate and reach out to. So, you'll see Buffy around. I'm going to transition back to Buffy. Buffy the Goat, Buffy is a type, there's a treatment that goes alongside there. You'll see him around town. I encourage you, if you're an Instagrammer, follow him at BuffyTheGoat.Ict. He'll be making appearances this, over the next eight months as we spread awareness about the campaign. Like I said, it's a fundraising campaign, but the goal is is how much money can be raised for patient services. So, you'll see him. This Friday, about 1:15, we're going to go up on a 120-foot boom lift. So, pray for me, because I'm scared of heights, but we're going to go up on a boom lift and look around the city and everything like that. But, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you to Ben for bringing this forward for us every year. I know we did it last year, and thank you for doing that. So, look forward to next year. Mayor? Yes. If you can, we have one more presentation.
Mr. Mayor and council members, it is a great honor to announce a truly remarkable achievement this evening. We are celebrating a leader whose unwavering commitment and vision has made a profound impact on our community. This exceptional individual exemplifies creativity, persistence, and determination, and has been instrumental, an instrumental driver of change and growth in Park City. His leadership fosters collaboration, bringing city staff and residents together to overcome challenges and seize incredible opportunities. We are fortunate to have such a passionate and talented leader at the helm who genuinely cares about our community. Your commitment to Park City inspires us all, and we look forward to your future achievements and success. Now, without further ado, I am thrilled to announce that, Mr. Mayor, you have been nominated and selected as the League of Kansas Municipalities 2024 Mayor of the Year. Congratulations.
That was definitely a shock. Now I know why my wife came tonight.
We do have some people that would like to say congratulations.
John, I am overjoyed to see you honored as Mayor of the Year. Your dedication and heart are truly remarkable. Somehow through it all, you always seem to find time to put family first. I am so proud of you, and I love you so much.
I just wanted to say congratulations to Mayor John Leher. With his leadership, this Park City is growing. Congratulations.
Hey, John, congratulations on the award. You're a great guy, and it was well deserved that you get this award.
Congratulations, Mayor Leonard, Leonard, however you say that damn name. I can't believe that you are the best mayor in all of the land. Quite the honor, even if they don't know how to pronounce your name.
I would like to say thank you for your selection of Mayor of the Year. I'm truly humbled by this and would like to express my greatest appreciation for this honor. Okay, I don't wear glasses, and I'm not the mayor of Park City, Kansas. My twin brother is, and, John, I could not be more proud of you for being selected Mayor of the Year. The truth is, I'm not surprised. You're a person who gives 110% into anything that you believe in, and Park City has given you the opportunity to show your loyalty, passion, and extreme dedication to working with the citizens to create a vibrant community. Your future continues to be bright. Stay hungry, keep up the great work, and continue to be an inspiration to the people around you. Congratulations to my little brother Johnny Leonard for being selected Mayor of the Year.
Hey, Mayor, it's great working with you. You do an awesome job here in the community of Park City. You know, it was great to have you in our Southern County.
John, I just wanted to let you know, your work ethic, your character, and your wisdom truly set you apart, and those traits are not only admired by me, but admired by those around you. Your dedication to Park City has inspired me, and I'm proud to see your efforts being recognized in this way. Congratulations, John, and thank you for your outstanding service.
Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Ryan Bailey. Just a quick note to say congratulations. You truly are one of the best. I see how hard you work for the people of Park City, how you serve your fellow council members and the staff, and I know the future is bright in Park City because of your leadership, and this is a very, very well-deserved honor, and I'm honored to work alongside you, sir. So, congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
What's up, Dad? Congrats on winning your award. You do a fantastic job leading by example, and every day, I strive to be like you. Very proud of you and all that you've accomplished throughout your time as mayor, and I just wanted to get on here to say congrats, and I love you.
Well, I don't know how you guys pulled that off, because I had no idea. And with my wife here tonight, I didn't catch on. So, wow, what an honor. Thank you very much, and, you know, I really, even, even receiving something like, or even being nominated for something like that, I really honestly have to look around me and look at the people that I'm surrounded by, our staff, council members, past and present. I say thanks to each of you for your, your energy and helping drive our city to go to the next level. So, that's really cool. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm in awe, I guess. I had no idea. So, thank you.
I saved these to the end when everyone's gone, but since people are still here and haven't left, I want to say thank you and congratulations, Mayor, on this. You definitely deserve it. I will say, you know, the first, probably my first three years on council, I wouldn't say I necessarily enjoyed working with you as much as I have in the last three years, four years now, and I appreciate really the friendship and the leadership that you provide. I think we really came together at a very complex time where our city was at, and I just appreciate your heart and your hard work, and so, thank you. And again, congratulations. You definitely deserve this.
Thank you. And I would, I would say the same. The one thing I do enjoy about public service overall is you can find someone that is completely different of you and doesn't agree with a lot of things you say, but the more that you get to know each other, the more you work together, you find common good, that you can come together and make a difference in so much stuff. So, that's, that's just a perfect example of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would say exactly the same thing that Ben said, but in a lot shorter, probably. But I've only been with you two years, actually about a year and a half, but I've told my wife several times, we cannot lose that guy from the mayor position. So, I hope we get to see you for a lot of years to come.
Here, here. That's, I'll keep mine shorter than Charles, you know, because I've only been less than a year, so. Congratulations, John.
Great job, John. I'm only here because of you, so.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. You're kind of embarrassing me now, so I'll stay here lo, long enough to where maybe my bald spot will go away and the camera. It's been... All right, thank you. Public forum, do we have anybody signed up for public forum? I don't know if we did or not. We'll go on, we'll move on to staff reports, and if someone will grab that report back in the back and see.
Yes, sir. As far as staff reports, I hadn't planned on giving one tonight, but I would like to bring to everyone's attention, as we all know, that we're working on planning, designing, and building a new senior center. On October 15th, I'd like to make an announcement that we're going to have a public hearing here at City Hall at 7:00 PM, and it will be specifically to discuss the senior center. Part of the reason of that public hearing is we will have the architects here to, to talk about a sample floor plan that they've already come up with, with various inputs from staff, but the important thing is that we are applying for a CDB block grant, that's Community Development Block Grant, which could award us up to $800,000 if approved, and because of that, the, there's two application deadlines. One is November 1st, and the next one is May of next year. In order to meet our timeline for constructing the new senior center, the May one would not work, so we need to meet that November timeline, and it requires, the state requires a public hearing 15 days prior. So, that's why we're having it on a special night, which would be the third Tuesday of the month, October 15th, here at City Hall at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Look forward to that growth opportunity and getting that done. Thank you. Nobody signed up for public forum, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Troy.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Jim.
I'd second that.
Okay, motion and second, motion by Troy, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Onto new business. Item six, discuss and consider resolution determining the advisability of ma, of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, and making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, thus being pavement improvements in Prairie Hills and Prairie Hills Third Edition. Sean?
Yes, sir. Attached is a petition, the attached petition was filed with the city clerk proposing paving improvements to Prairie Hills and Prairie Hills Third Edition. The petition was signed by the owners of record more than one-half of the area liable for assessment for the proposed improvements, and therefore, the petitioners have requested that such improvements be made without notice and hearing as required by KSA 12-6A01. The improvements include construction of a portion of Meadow Hill Street, a portion of Village Estates Drive, Wexford Street, and Wexford Court, along with mass grading and drainage to be installed where necessary to serve the area described as the improvement district, all in accordance with city standards, plans, specifications prepared for and approved by the city engineer. The estimated or probable cost of the proposed improvements is $420,000, with said estimated cost being increased at a prorata rate of 1% per month after adoption. The improvement district to be assessed for the cost of the improvements is lots 19 through 25, Block 5, Prairie Hills Edition, and lots 4 through 13, Block A, and lots 4 through 7, Block B, Prairie Hills Third Edition, to the city of Park City, Cedric County, Kansas. The method of assessment is on a fractional basis as described below. In the event of all part of the lots and parcel proposed in district are reconfigured before or after the assessments have been levied, the assessments against can be reconfigured and recalculated on a square foot basis if needed. The apportionment of the improvement district, the improvements between the district and the city is 100% against the improvement district and 0% to be paid by the city. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Sean. Ben?
Yeah, Sean, on the next three, these three items here, are they the same lots, and are the specials set, spread across the same?
Let me check here real quick.
Yes, they are, sir.
Okay. I, because it's the same, it's the same area, same setup, other than one stormwater, so I figured we could move through these quickly. So, I'd make a motion to approve...
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Resolution 1222-2024.
Thank you, Ben. Troy, second. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, see and none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes eight-zero.
Five-zero.
I'm sorry, five-zero. Seven, discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, and making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, thus being stormwater drainage for Prairie Hills and Prairie Hills Third Edition. Sean?
Yes, sir. The same proposed improvement district, the same assessment, and actually, proposed improvements are the exact same cost, $420,000, to be spread 0%, 100% among the properties and 0 for the city. Staff recommends approval.
Very good. Thank you. Ben?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 1223-2024.
Terry? Any further discussion? Motion by Ben, seconded by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Move to item eight, discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, and making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, thus being water distribution, Prairie Hills, and Prairie Hills Third Edition. Sean?
Yes, sir. This one is for water distribution. The proposed improvements is $250,000, again, with the same lots being assessed in the same proportions. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 1224-2024.
Thank you. Troy?
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Move to item nine, discuss and consider a resolution to adopt and allocate funds for an outdoor fitness court as part of the National Fitness Campaign.
The National Fitness Campaign is dedicated to providing access and healthy infrastructure to fight the rise of physical inactivity and make the world fitness-free, class, fitness-free. Over the past couple of months, local residents who are involved in various physical fitness programs in the area recommended NFC contact Park City to discuss the possibility of installing a fitness court in Park Center. NFC reached out to staff about the program itself and the various grant opportunities available. Staff submitted an application on behalf of the city and was notified that the city qualified for the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas' largest award of $50,000 to help offset the cost of purchasing and installing a new fitness court. The cost of the fitness course equipment is $160,000. Blue Cross Blue Shields is awarding $50,000 grant under their 2024 program, which requires the city to purchase the equipment now and store, and install it until it can be installed later in mid-2025. In addition to the equipment, the city would be responsible for the cost of the concrete pad that the fitness is actually mounted to, as well as the installation of the equipment onto the court. It is unbudgeted. Staff recommends, in this, it's not in the packet, but that council adopt the resolution that's provided, and then this would be approving the mayor and authorizing him to execute a purchase order and amount not to exceed $110,000, and that would be out of the Parks Fund.
Thank you, and I have Kyle Tucker signed up to speak on this item, if you want to come forward. Thank you for being here tonight.
Of course. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. My name's Kyle Tucker. I've spoken to you guys before in a pre, previous role of Vice President of the Prairie Hills Edition that's just south of you guys. Tonight, though, I am standing before you as kind of a representative of, in behalf of F3, which was a part of the group that contacted Sean and the National Fitness Campaign. We're a local men's fitness and leadership group that's committed to improving the health, physical health, and fostering connections through free, peer-led workouts internationally, community by community. Our mission is not just to build stronger individuals, but to build a stronger, healthier, more connected community, and I serve the men of Wichita as their comms leader. Today, I want to kind of discuss how this proposed fitness court can enhance the work that F3 is doing in the city and how together we can kind of make a lasting impact on public health and the community engagement. So, for those of you who don't know or are not familiar with F3, I know some of you are. But F3 stands for Fitness, Fellowship, and Faith. These are three core values that really drive our mission. To the fitness piece, we provide free, outdoor, peer-led workouts for men of all fitness levels. Fellowship, it's beyond fitness. We say it's more than a workout. We aim to create social bonds that build leaders and communities in, in their community and at home. The faith piece, while we're non-denominational, we don't claim any religion, we focusing on encouraging service to others and strengthening the social fabric of our communities. We say to believe in something bigger than yourself. F3 operates across the nation and really across the globe in public spaces, parks, schools, churches, parking lots, any open area really, and will operate. It does so at no cost to the community or the participants. Our organization is inclusive and operates solely to the benefit of the public. We have found that fitness is a very powerful entry point to improving not just physical well-being, but also mental health as well, and those connections. F3 started in Wichita just over three years ago at one location, Wichita Collegiate. We were only going on Saturdays once a week. Just this past Saturday, we celebrated our three years in Wichita and had over 90 guys out on Saturday morning to kind of celebrate together. Now, we are, have grown to offer workouts seven days a week, 34 different workouts that you can find across the city, at 16 different locations, Derby, Andover, Mays, Newton, Valley Center, Hutchinson, even you name it. The proposed fitness court represents a really amazing opportunity to expand access to not just health and wellness in this community, but to be the first location that we would have here in Park City, and as an active member of F3 and a local resident of Park City, I'm all in favor of this. We believe it aligns perfectly with F3's mission and would help extend our reach even further, benefiting men of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds, and not just those men, but their wives, their families, and the community. F3 would be able to benefit the community and have benefits from the fitness court through a couple of different ways. One, I think there would be free and consistent usage. F3 organizes regular workout sessions as it is today. Like I said, 36 throughout the week, but we sometimes do special events. We're typically early in the morning, 5:30 during the weekday, 6:30 on Saturdays, sometimes in the evenings when the park is otherwise quiet. With a designated fitness court, we would have a central, versatile space to host workouts that involve strength, endurance, and flexibility, which are key aspects of our workouts. Myself, as well as Councilmember Terry Osborne, we call him Bloody Mary, live in the connecting neighborhood and are committed to making sure this community, the men of it, and the greater Wichita region provide constant use of the fitness court. The second benefit I would see is engage in a broader demographic. F3 welcomes men of all fitness levels and all ages. Some are experienced athletes, while others are new to exercise. With a fitness court like this, we can expand our offering to better serve older adults, younger fathers, those who may be intimidated by the traditional gym environments. Councilmember Osborne and I can both attest that we've seen workouts where men in their young twenties, very able-bodied, all the way up to men in their sixties, just getting back into fitness, and every gamut in between have been able to endure really tough, really physical workouts together right alongside each other. I have yet to come across a fitness program, let alone a gym, that does such, for such a broad group of individuals, and especially at our price point, which is always free. Number three, increased social and civic engagement. Our workouts are always followed by fellowship, whether it's a cup of coffee or gathering together for a community service project. The fitness court would not just be a centerpiece for exercise, but a place to build connections, foster relationships, and make our neighborhoods safer, healthier, and more engaged. Again, Councilmember and I can attest to the many dollars we've seen impacting local communities up in Valley Center and across the city through just getting together for a cup of coffee or two and supporting a local small business. That will help, no doubt, nurture the many small businesses that are going to come into Park Center here in the not-too-distant future. And then lastly, from a promotion of health, F3's emphasis on peer-led workouts and community accountability helped those members stay committed to their fitness goals. This consistency is really crucial to long-term health outcomes. The fitness court could act as a cornerstone for public health initiatives at the city, encouraging men and their families, and even youth to be more active. I'll just share one brief story of a good friend of mine, his wife wrote this down for us not too long ago, about what she's seen, the impact of F3 and these kind of workouts do for her husband and family. She writes, "I've seen firsthand, in my family, how F3 transforms a man. The physical health benefits alone are incredible, but that's not what makes this organization..." "...this unit of men so remarkable. What drew my husband back that day and what keeps my brother committed to his location in Kansas City is the camaraderie, the fellowship, and the family that is built. There is something indescribable when men will rally around each other..." the fellowship, and the family that is built. There is something indescribable when men will rally around each other, encouraging and pushing one another to be better husbands and fathers and leaders in the community. It's what keeps them coming back. It's what drives us wives to cheer them on even when we think they're absolutely insane for doing the things that they do." My wife would echo that. This is why our family is committed to F3 Nation as a whole and the incredible locations in and around our city. We understand that this investment here, this $110,000 of public resources needed and the need to be utilized in ways that benefit as many people as possible, and that's why F3 is ready and willing to collaborate with the city to ensure that the fitness court is widely used, well-maintained, and accessible. Our group would even be open to organizing community events, fitness challenges, and family-friendly workout sessions that highlight the value of this space to the broader public. This past summer, we hosted workouts for dads to bring their kids out and get involved in fitness activities that were appropriate for kids even of a very, very young age. And as far as fitness challenges, this first fitness court that was opened in Wichita, we actually hosted a Murph Challenge there when it opened earlier this year in the city in partnership with the city of Wichita. So we're committed to being good stewards of this public resource and see it as a mutually beneficial relationship. F3 gains a dedicated space for workout, and the community benefits from a vibrant, well-utilized fitness amenity. Just to reiterate, the incredible potential this fitness court holds for promoting health, wellness, and community engagement, F3 is eager to support and utilize this resource to bring more people into an active, healthy lifestyle while fostering meaningful relationships and a sense of belonging in the community. But more importantly, I've come to find it's to build men up through doing difficult things together to make them better men at home and eventually in the community. So thank you for your time and consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, if you have any.
Thank you, Kyle. Ben?
A couple of questions, and I'll spread it around. So Kyle, I'll start. We thank you guys for what you all are doing, though, in our community. I think it's a phenomenal project. You almost had me subscribed until you said 5:30 in the morning, and then I was out. I almost joined again when you said coffee afterwards, but I figured that's still early, so. But thank you for what you're doing now. The question I do have, so we do have an outdoor fitness space currently in the Grove Street Parks. Have you all used that or ever considered it before?
Where is that one located?
So?
Grove Street Parks.
The one that's just?
Yeah, kind of by the butterfly and the pond and all that stuff.
Yeah, that's... Have you been by there recently?
Yeah, well, yes.
The few bars.
The what? I'm sorry?
It's a few bars that are somewhat rested out, if it's the one I'm thinking of.
Okay, and that very well could be. And then, so I know we've had that. We've had it for years. I've very rarely ever seen it used. And again, if we're having rested-out bars, well, then maybe it just needs to come down at that point, and it's not serving a purpose. I'll leave that for parks, but I was wondering, because in the years I've been here, we've talked about this, about six years ago, I was talking with Jack at that point about the idea, because there was a project brought, and the concern was is little usage out of the ones we have. Obviously, you have a program that's been around and encouraged to use. That kind of answers, though, my question really to the second part is if that one's not getting used, would this one get used? But if it's not usable, that could be it. Second question then, and then this would be actually more for Sean. So we have a price for this equipment. Do we have any pictures of what this equipment, what is this exercise place?
The basic way to describe it is, I'm sitting there trying to figure out. If people would like to go online and look, you can just Google "fitness court" and then click on "Images," and it'll bring it up. The space itself is on a 38-square-foot, 38-feet-by-38-feet concrete pad. It's a total of six or seven stations. It has various different concrete appliances to it that people can do squats from, they can do push-ups from, they've got pull-up bars. It is virtually a static environment. We started looking into the benefits of the program. I contacted the former Parks Director of the City of Wichita, because they had recently installed one, and he said, "I think it's absolutely perfect because of the fact it's a dumb," his word, "dumb" piece of equipment. He doesn't have to worry about electricity. There's virtually no maintenance included on it. It is just a static piece of equipment that, there's 27 different exercises that, whatever your mind can imagine, that's the kind of exercise that you can create with it. There is a larger version that's known as a fitness studio, and that basically doubles the size. On the other one, it is just nothing more than a plain concrete pad or a concrete slab that has padding on it for people to do Pilates or yogas or static-type exercises that way. When I did talk with the Director of Parks for Wichita, he indicated that that would be one thing, if they were to do this in the future, they would probably add something like that onto it, the fitness studio side of the house, but that that wouldn't go through the National Fitness Council, because it is nothing more than a concrete pad. His recommendation was pouring something similar to like a two-foot-wide curb all the way around the area that you want, and then possibly putting in AstroTurf, something that would be maybe softer or more appropriate to workout on. So it's a very small footprint.
Is it blue?
It is a very light color, blue. When we sit there and look at the proposed development for Park Center and everything, the envision would be somewhere in the southeast corner, down by the Detention Pond. The Detention Pond, prior to this even being mentioned, had already had planned walking trails going around that, so if they are going to run laps, you know, we can measure out the distance of what that is. It has already been programmed in there to provide a pavilion and some parking spaces there in that space before this was even conceived. So it seems like a natural fit. And as we all know, the Park Center is proposed to have 400 new additional units, residential units, a combination of patty homes, townhomes, and apartments, all within that 48 acres. And it's all connected with sidewalks and connectivity and green spaces, so it seems like a natural fit.
I mean, I like the idea. I really do. I was just trying to get an idea, one of what is it? I mean, working out is great, but what is it? And then an idea on that. I don't know if there's anyone else that wants to talk on this. I think maybe so. So the only thing I would ask is, can we then develop a plan to figure out what's going on with the Grove Street Park? If it's rested out, that's a safety hazard.
It should be as part of our master plan.
Master plan on the park side of the house.
I'm just worried, though, that if it's rested out, then we're going to have safety, actual safety issues now.
Understand.
Thank you. Jim?
I just kind of wanted to restate for clarity. I love seeing the local involvement and the faith-based men's group. That's great. But I kind of wanted it stated, this is available for everybody, regardless of faith and gender and all those things. It's a true community thing. And so I guess I just wanted to restate that as part of the conversation, and then it seems like a great addition to what we're working on back here. So just my thoughts.
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, Chop, thanks for your comments. You exposed Bloody Mary, so you know.
That's fair.
So this is Chop here. So, you know, and I can speak to this, just comments about regardless of age and regardless of fitness ability, because I'm the poster child for that within the F3 group. So I think at most of the workouts, I'm the oldest, typically the oldest guy there. So but, you know, with that, you know, having stations, Sean, as you pointed out, many of the workouts are done with what we call coupons, and those are cement blocks. You know, so rather than having a workout station, you carry around cement blocks, or you, you know, you do squats with cement blocks, or you do, you know, something like that. So actually having stations would remove the requirement for carrying around cement blocks from workout to workout as well. So I think, yeah, I see it as a good thing, especially for Park City, and you and I could both walk to it.
Oh, yeah. I could plan to.
Very good. Do I have a motion? Jim?
I'd move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a purchase order with the National Fitness Campaign in an amount not to exceed $110,000.
Thank you, Troy.
I second.
Sorry. You need to approve Resolution 1225. That was not put in the motion.
Sure.
Yes. Okay, yeah, it wasn't in here. So Resolution 1225, okay.
Dash 2024.
Yeah, dash 2024.
Pretty good on that? And the second, Troy? Are you good with that?
I'm good with that. I still second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item 10, discuss and consider approval of a bid from Foley Equipment for purchase of a drum roller. Gina?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The adopted budget for 2024 included the purchase of a drum roller. The drum roller is a critical piece of equipment used in large asphalt patches. Public Works currently uses a small hand plate to compact our hot mix patches. However, as the number of large patches with affected curb are being discovered throughout the city, the roller is even more important to ensure the longevity of our patches. Staff is proposing to utilize Sourcewell contract pricing for the purchase of a double drum roller from Foley Equipment. Sourcewell streamlines the procurement process for government agencies with competitively solicited bids, contracts for local vendors. Staff is requesting approval to purchase the drum roller from Foley Equipment utilizing Sourcewell for a total amount of $60,000 to be paid from the Special Streets and Highway Fund. I stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Gina. Any discussion? Ben?
So with these, you see, obviously with the roller, you're going to get a lot more compactness on there. So is it a pretty significant increase in the lifespan generally associated with your repairs versus how you're having to hand-compact it?
It can increase the longevity of it pretty significantly. We've recently discovered some patches that were done within the past two years that are already starting to sink significantly, like several inches. If we'd had the roller, we would have had more material. We would have been able to compact it, and that probably wouldn't be close to failure at this point.
I'd make a motion to go and approve the purchase of the drum roller from Foley Equipment utilizing Sourcewell pricing for a total amount of $60,000 to be paid from the Special Streets and Highway Fund.
Thank you, Ben. Jim?
I'd second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item 11, discuss and consider changes to the 2024 street rehabilitation program.
Back in February, council approved the proposed 2024 pavement rehabilitation program focusing entirely on Broadway Avenue and the entrance to Old Lawrence Road. The engineer's estimate for the project was $1.5 million. However, bids came in favorable and well below budget. Staff is recommending to add four additional products, sorry, projects, to utilize the remaining funds. Those additions include the extension of Grove Street connecting from Fairchild to High Ridge, a two-inch mill and overlay of the existing Grove Street from 61st Street to Fairchild, a two-inch mill and overlay of Ravina Street from Hydraulic Avenue to Fairchild, and improvements to Jacksonville Street from Connolly Court to 61st Street North. Part of that would be a concrete improvement extending what we did, what we just did with the intersection up past that second entrance to Quick Trip, and the remainder being the two-inch mill and overlay. The engineer's estimate for these four additional projects is $689,737. When you combine that with what Broadway Avenue and Old Lawrence Road bid at, we have a projected total of all projects combined at $1,484,939. Staff is recommending approval of the addition changes to the 2024 street rehabilitation program. I stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Gina. Charles?
I drove all those streets today, and I did not find any of them that didn't... They are all at the stage where they do need to be milled, excuse me, and overlaid. Do have one question, though. South hydraulic from 45th Street up to the edge of where Wyndham starts. That section is worse than any of the sections that I drove today. Is there a reason why that's being neglected?
So part of the reason some of these got moved up were they were identified as we were working through our early 2024 projects, and so they were more shovel-ready to push forward to utilize these 2024 funds. Had we had the, you know, entire nine months in our advantage, we could have sourced out different projects like that. Two of these, Ravina and Jacksonville, we saw on one of the options for the 2024 projects. So that likely would have been something that we would have come back with in 2025. Being able to move those up allows us to open up to additional areas like hydraulic near Wyndham to occur sooner. So I do think that's an area we're looking at. We're having some failures there. We're trying to patch and hold to get us by. But I fully anticipate that's an area that will come up as an option in the 2025 street rehab.
Yeah, I haven't seen any patching going on at all on that. I drive that probably five times a day. And I know a year ago, I requested, you know, on behalf of our Wyndham group that it gets some attention, and it got some attention, but it didn't get very good attention. You know, some of the patches were filling the potholes, but they only put it up halfway, you know? So again, the water sets in there, eats it out, pothole again. Because we've got some potholes in there now that are probably this deep, you know, eight inches deep, and just rough on the, excuse me, rough on the tires, rough on the cars, and just not a very good entry into the city. And there's a lot of, that's a main corridor, you know?
And I don't disagree. We have been trying to patch it, but unfortunately, they're popping back out. We have base issues, which even the two-inch mill and overlay isn't probably going to fix what that area needs. We would have to go back and look at something more in-depth, getting into that base, restabilizing that base.
Again, I haven't seen any attempts to patch that in the past 16, 18 months. Have you been doing that?
We have. We've been putting it in there, especially focusing on the entrance where it's starting to alligator. Sean and I have had conversations about that area needing attention. It's too far gone to do a lesser solution.
The entryway into Wyndham? Okay, yeah, that's been hit. It's in pretty dire need of some pothole mix, definitely right now, too, you know? They've got a huge pothole there on the left side, be the south side of the entry. But, you know, to go out and do puddles, I don't think it really should take a major act of Congress to get something done. It should take, you know, a truckload of mix and go out there and do it, you know? And if we can keep those things filled and fill to the top, it'll prevent those things from getting worse and destroying the base. Right now, you're probably looking at, like you said, because it's been neglected for so long, the base is being destroyed underneath there. So I don't think it should wait till '25 to go out and throw some pothole mix in there.
Oh, I'm not recommending waiting until '25 to tackle potholes or even patching. We've identified some larger patches that we want to use this new roller on within the subdivision. So I apologize. I was not recommending postponing patching or potholes. I'm talking about the larger solution that it needs.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I've seen that right there between the two ponds.
Yeah.
It's sinking, yeah.
It does, it seems like in the fall, about every couple of years, that thing drops a lot. I know they fixed it a few years ago, and now again in the fall as soon as the weather changes.
Not really sure what causes that, but it does fall, yeah.
And I can tell you, like, that area of hydraulic has really taken a beating this year with the North Junction traffic. A lot of folks avoid that diversion there on the main line and take hydraulic and then go west on 53rd Street. So I would say this, too, is if you look at how much we're doing on Broadway this year, and remember, Broadway's four lanes, plus in some areas a turn lane, so you've got a very wide section of roadway, and we're doing a significant amount. So if you look at where we'll be next year, as we've... So if you look at where we'll be next year, as we've started tackling these very wide roads of Broadway, Sixty-first Street, that next year, we can hit like Hydraulic, I know even Hydraulic south of Sixty-first down here in front of Prairie Hills, and Village Estates is pretty rough, too, right next to the houses, and I know a lot of those people here, a lot of rumbling all the time. So hopefully, we can start picking those things off one at a time and make a difference.
I think that'd be a great idea. Just keep the potholes filled until you get there, is all I'm saying.
Yep. Very good. Thank you. Troy?
I'm super excited for this. I mean, we just bumped up the amount we could spend on getting this done for this year, and being able to utilize it in quite a few locations, kind of a nice deal. It does help that I get to drive one of these roads every day. So if there's no further discussion?
There is, but go ahead. That's fine.
I would move to approve the amended 2024 street rehabilitation program.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, I will second for discussion real quick here on that. Gina, as we're continuing there, are we, in your years of street work, which has been a lot, several, and not a lot, that's not nice, has been extensive, how are you seeing the pricing go, up or down?
I think it's starting to stabilize and go down.
Okay. As a whole, though, inflationary costs as a whole on street rehabilitation costs over the past five years is up significantly.
It is still up. I think what we're seeing is some cost savings on that oil that would go into the asphalt production.
Okay, and really, the reason I say that is because what we're seeing here is, as each year happens, cities are getting hit with the same sort of inflationary costs that everybody else is, and you're having to try to find solutions. And I applaud the work that you're doing in identifying and trying to find the slow-hanging fruit that we can knock out within a reasonable amount. But I think the fact of the matter is, is that local governments need to have the ability and the flexibility to utilize and capture, to capture and utilize the ad valorem taxes that come in without being restricted by other government entities from allowing us to do so, because I think that only makes our job in providing public service better, safer, and more efficient for our citizens. So the work that you're doing is lending to the support to keeping our streets safe for our police officers, and I know, you know, there's no group really here in favor of taking away resources from our officers. So I think anytime that we can have those resources available, it's important. So thank you for doing what you can, but again, I just stress, I think it's important for local governments to have the ability to utilize money resourcefully to make sure we're safe. So that was a long way to say all that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, it was motion by Troy, seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our final agenda item for tonight. Now we have governing body remarks. Ben?
Nothing. I can say something if you all want.
Well, you put us into shock.
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Ow. And he's no second on that? Charles?
Second is...
Do you have any comments?
No.
None for me.
I'm just saying, congratulations, John, for a job well done. You do a great job. That's all I got.
Thank you.
I didn't say anything earlier, because I was kind of set back seeing your son, Grant, being, you know, this little guy I remember trick-or-treating, making a speech on the TV here. So what a well-spoken young man he's turned into be. So anyway, yeah, great job. Congratulations. You always lead by example, and I really respect that, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Did have one more thing. The LIG meeting is, I forget the dates of it, it's coming up here real quick, though. The deadline's this Friday, and I went to it last year. Sean suggested that it would be very good for new members, if you have a chance to go. It's educational, entertaining and educational, plus it's in Wichita.
Very good. And many of you know that I'm attending some training in the coming weeks, and we'll miss a few council meetings that conflict with my training, and also this event, unfortunately, I didn't know about, but I wouldn't have made it anyway. But man, what an honor, and thank you. So hopefully, somebody will be there to attend on my behalf, and anyway, thank you very much. Thanks to each of you. I really mean that. I think even maybe if I was recognized in this, it really has a lot to do with folks that are around us, and my overall belief is, we only get one life, and our opportunity as council members, as administrators, or whatever we do, we have such an ability to impact people around us and communities around us, and never want to miss an opportunity to do something like that. So thanks to each of you guys for serving Park City. I feel like we're on a good track, and hopefully continues very strongly, so thank you. Charles, you had your button again?
Oh, that was for that, yeah.
Very good. All right. I would entertain a non-debatable motion to adjourn. Ben?
Then moved.
Jim?
Seconded.
Okay, motion by Ben, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five-zero.